... as a finder of fact is was there any competent substantial evidence to refute the applicant meeting its burden? And I'll state that a different way. We have the initial burden of demonstrating compliance with your code and your comprehensive plan. I respectfully submit we hit that on three different ways. Your staff recommended approval. Florida law has stated that that is competent substantial evidence to support a decision to approve. P&amp;Z voted to approve, five-three. That is competent substantial evidence of meeting an applicant's burden that we meet the code. We called the only urban and regional planner not associated with staff who testified under oath that this rezoning met all the requirements of your comprehensive plan and your land development code. I respectfully submit that the only competent substantial evidence that you heard supports the rezoning. We've heard a lot of requests about, oh, the historic district wasn't finalized, or Melrose didn't, would like you to take a time out and look at the rules and do things differently. That's not what you're here for today. You have a set of rules that the county has adopted. The commercialization of this piece was decided in 1992 when the future land use map colored it red. And a property owner is entitled to zoning that is consistent with the commercial future land use map designation. As it sits right now, it is in conflict with split zoning. The request for C-2, we respectfully submit we presented competent substantial evidence to support C-2. And there's two documents I'd like to show you just as we conclude. If you would be kind enough to go to Tab 1, which was our PowerPoint, and look at Page 4 of the PowerPoint presentation. There's been several requests that why don't we go with CPO instead of C-2? I would submit legally, CPO would be spot zoning. It's my understanding and looking at the zoning map of all of Melrose, there is not a single parcel that is zoned CPO. When you look at this piece of property, all that red under the current zoning map is already C-2. The very thing that allegedly is going to bring the downfall of Melrose already exists up and down 21 and across 26, a C of C-2. Our subject property already has split zoning with a part of C-2. If you were to adopt the argument that we're going to go with CPO, which would be, again, my understanding, the only time in the history of Melrose that a parcel would have CPO, you would be creating split zoning again, which is inconsistent with your regulations. If you would turn to Page 10, please, of the same PowerPoint presentation. That gives you the overall look of the region. And you'll see there is one parcel in the historic district, that's C-1, no CPO. You'll see further east and west, that row, that C of C-2 goes east and west. You look at the 21 going north-south, you have a C of C-2 with a C-4 and a C-3 already on 21. That's the existing zoning. We're simply filling in a portion of property that is already C-2. In the absence of any competent substantial evidence, and let me expand upon that for one moment. You heard a lot about character. You heard a lot about we have a vision for our community. What you didn't hear in the opposition was this zoning fails to meet this policy of the comprehensive plan or this provision of the land development code. The opposition was silent on pointing to a particular policy of your plan, a particularly provision of your land development code. And hopes for what something might be in the future, or hopes that an amendment might take place in the future is not relevant to what you have today. And what you have today, I respectfully submit, is the only evidence indicated that the applicant has met its burden, and there was no evidence. There was two policies that were cited by the Honorable Judge, and there was a confusion on the level of service. The number that she was relying upon was LOSC, not LOSD. And we had Angela Garland testify what the, and it's actually on the exhibit that the judge provided to y'all, the trips are thirteen fifty. So, the, even if you were to consider traffic concurrency, which we submit is not appropriate at this stage because you don't have an end user yet, you have a range. This is not a Dollar General decision. This is not an attorney's office decision. This is not a library decision. Your code has created a range of uses that are allowed in C-2. And when you get to the point of site planning, that's when the concurrency analysis will kick in. And under the documentation that FDOT has calculated, that you have been provided, there is current capacity today to meet any of those uses that are allowed under C-2. The property is not in the historic district. It is not in the historic district buffer. It is simply an extension of what already exists up and down 21 and 26. And we ask you to approve our application today. And when we get to the site plan stage, then we'll worry about concurrency and trees and pipes and things of that nature. But we're looking at a color on a map that doesn't generate a single trip. We don't get there until the site plan. So, please approve our application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thieria.
I think now may be a good time for our ex-party disclosures, in case someone wants to inquire about them.
Mr., Council, just for the record, there were, again, in fifty-plus emails that I received, I'm sure my colleagues would be able to say what they received, but there were countless citizens who, for the most part, communicated via email to, to me, and then the, the letter with the objection to proposed rezoning, and several others, and all of those are on record, sir. District 1?
I have not had any ex parte communications. I have had many emails, have not responded to any, but I have certainly...
The emails are ex parte communications?
They are also. Then that's what I've had, the ones that are on public record.
District 2?
Also, everything I've received has been public record or snail mail, either one, and it came through our post office box.
District 4?
I have received numerous emails that I've made public. Also, I've informed counsel of two conversations, one with Mr. Rick Tisdale about the water pipe being located out there, and the other one was with Mr. Williamson on the property. I did try to avoid this topic as best I could, and some of the people in the audience that will attest to that, at the Better Place Meeting at the library that we had, so I was very careful not to get too far in the weeds on that. But Mr. Williamson and I did have a conversation and basically made that public knowledge to our attorney, and he's made that public information to the other side, too. Thank you.
District 5?
I think your numbers are low when you say fifty emails.
I said plus.
I, too, have had one conversation with Mr. Williamson from the grocery store, and as Mr. Harvey said, has tried to stay out of the weeds as best I could, and told him that it would be resolved here today.
Counsel?
All right. For the Board, is there anything in these ex-party communications that would prevent you from making a decision today based strictly on what was presented here today and made part of the record?
District 1?
No.
District 2?
No.
District 4?
No.
District 5?
No.
District 3? No. Thank you. Thank you, Counsel. At this time, we're closing the public hearing that we may go into Board deliberation and vote, which that means to each of us, unless the commissioners have a specific question and asks any specific person to approach us to answer a question or to clarify any thought process, the deliberations will remain among us in consultation with our legal counsel. Okay? Shall I start with District 1?
Yes. I think so. First of all, I want to say that I appreciate the civility that this group has shown. I think you all spoke so eloquently about your love of your town, and that it's from your heart, you know, how you felt, and the way you conducted yourself was exemplary, and thank you for that. I want to tell you that this, I'm from Crescent City. I was mayor of Crescent City for a number of years, and I've always compared it to Melrose. And we have a big lake, and we have one traffic light, and we have green and clean and pure water and lots of good things. So, I, I appreciate that. Raised my children there, and I really understand what you've had to say. I have found this particularly difficult because I relate to exactly what you're saying. But we do have laws that we have to go by and things that we have to comply with. Was it consistent with the comp plan? Yes. Did it comply with the land development code? Yes. I would love to have taken the land development code quote that Ms. Christiansen brought out and to see if any of that applied and use it, but as we explored it further, we saw that it did not help. It fixes the conflict with the zoning being a split zoning, and the most prevalent zoning was C-2, so it fits into that. And it did lie outside the Melrose historic district. So, this is what I really want to say today. You have such a beautiful jewel, and you took a step years ago to try and have an historic district. If you had an historic district today with rules and things laid out, you would have given me a hook to hang my thoughts on of granting this, of, of not granting this zoning because I really understand your request. But you did not. I did not have anything that I could base anything legal on not to make the decision that I have, have to make. But I, I want you to know that you have homework to do. I think some of you have alluded to that. You need to protect what you can and give future commissions the opportunity to, to vote how you really feel. And it is with regrets, but I feel that I need to approve what is recommended us by our Planning Department and our Planning and Zoning Board.
Thank you, District 1. District 2?
I'll pass.
District 4?
I'm kidding.
I didn't know we could do that.
You did, though, didn't you?
You can't do that, by the way. You don't have to signal your attempt preliminarily. Well, I want to. Thank you. Anyhow, this is a tough decision. And to all the people from Melrose, I have a lot of friends in that community, and this is not easy. It really isn't. If there was one thing to hang my hat on, you know, we vetted every piece of this thing today, I would hang it. I promise you. I almost feel defiant. I want to be the rebel and go with you, but the law is the law, and, and we can't do that. But I want to encourage to Melrose Business Association, Ms. Massey, please get that overlay done so this doesn't happen again. And this is not over, by the way. You know, the attorney alluded to the Walmart Distribution Center in Crescent City, and it sits vacant. There's a lot there. It got the zoning changed, and it never got developed. And, but anyhow, it's two different apples. So, you guys, you got to get the overlay, and you got to shape your town. This is one development that might or might not happen, I don't know, but you do have power past this. And, and I regret that I'm going to have to follow staff's recommendations today because there's just nothing that I can hang my hat on. Thank you.
Thank you, District 2. District 4?
Well, I do want to say thank you so much to the Melrose residents. We've worked very hard out there, and I have been working very, very hard with the other commissioners from Association of Counties out there. We're trying to really bring Melrose in and do some really good things out there. Even if this is not approved, like Commissioner Lible says, it doesn't mean it's the end. There isn't a Walmart, Supers, or Distribution Center built here. I, again, wish I could put something out there, and I think I do. And I'm going to make that presentation. Mr. Brand, if you, before you leave, I happen to agree with you. I sat here during these presentations thinking, what am I here for if it's already, all the attorneys have figured it out, and we're the, the last little level of government that you have left? But yet, it looks like everything pretty much has to fit in the box, and I think we can do better than that. I have some real issues with the traffic out there. I've stood on your street corner many a day, holding signs for candidates. I've actually walked the area many times. I tried to cross the road the other day on 21, couldn't get across for a long period of time. I get my hair cut in Melrose. I mean, I come out there to do business, and it's a very difficult area currently. And when you look at this map right here, that I'm not supposed to be looking at, but this was in my packet, I don't see how these semis are going to pull into this parking lot and back up to this loading zone. So, here goes County Road 21, and that's what's going to take place. And I think, in my, my opinion, I think traffic has not been studied properly. I think for pedestrians, for, for automobiles, and for semis, and it's a dangerous place out there. And I really think, in my opinion, we need to look at traffic a little bit better, a lot better, in this, for this situation. I do have to agree that cleaning up, if we could just say, okay, let's not look at a map, and let's look at land only, cleaning up that partial would be the best thing to do. But I'm not sure that this building right there with Pine Street, the access behind all those roads, 26th and 21, I think, I can't see how we can do this. So, that's my opinion. And thank you very much.
Thank you, District 4. I'm sorry, I cannot have any commentary from the audience, but thank you so very much, sir. District 5?
Again, a very difficult decision to make. I do want to applaud the residents of Melrose for your, your caring, your, your love of your town. I thoroughly understand that. I heard several people say thirty-five, thirty-seven years, whatever. This is my home, too. I don't, I do not live in Melrose, but I am a fifty-two-year resident of this Putnam County. I do understand the quaintness of the small-town atmosphere, and that's important. But the, the major thing that kept hanging over my head here is I kept looking at that elementary school and those kids coming out of there. And there's a lot, a lot, a lot of child traffic there that I don't think is amply covered as far as sidewalks and things like that, that, on their side of the street that they need. And, well, again, it was very difficult. I understand the, the legalities of things that we've read and were exposed to today, but the safety of those kids is paramount to myself. So, I'm going to have to go now.
Thank you, District 5. In conclusion, echo many of the comments that I've heard today, when I hear about the special charm, the beauty, the quaintness, the green, the sweetness, the historical, artistic, and cultural, and treasured, and wonderful, and marvelous, cherished, majestic environment of Melrose, I know that is not a stretch. I really appreciate the passion and the love that has been exhibited for Melrose. We, we, we feel you, and I have not lived in Melrose, but I have full respect and love for our citizens who have expressed themselves, I mean, just so wonderfully there. And, and I echo what I heard, starting with District 1. How you presented yourself is, I mean, you have raised the bar in our county as it relates to individuals who know that you have a difference of opinion for what is being recommended, but your civility and, I mean, the timing couldn't be better with us having National Civility Month there. But I, I just want to appreciate what I've heard. Couple of points I want to raise. Although we have 100% compliance and consistency with the code and concurrency in the comprehensive plan, we have 0% compliance and consistencies with the community and the citizens. We do understand, we do understand, and I don't want you to think that your coming here has been in vain, because it's not in vain. And so, what you've said today has not fallen on deaf ears. Where do we go from here? I think, obviously, this, this hearing is about property rights. This is about remedying, split zoning, and et cetera. But at the same time, what do we do? That planned unit development overlay would certainly give greater security, more prominent installation to beloved Melrose, no doubt about that. Even if we were to delay, those studies could not be retro. So, it's not like anything that would be done today forward could be applied to this particular case. So, we do want you to, to, to recognize and realize that it's, it's not a done deal. We properly vetted this. We want to be, and we will be, in compliance with our development codes, with the Florida statutes, as well as our local ordinances. So, as a result of that, it, it does create stress on us as legislative leaders, and it may appear to be some insensitivity. I can promise you that there is nothing but pure empathy for what we have heard here today. So, having said that, I'd like to entertain a motion from this commission. There's a recommended action from the Planning Commission that recommends approval, and what is the pleasure of this commission?
Move approval of the recommended action by the Planning Commission.
We have a proper motion?
I'll second it.
We have a proper second. Further discussion? We'll have a roll call vote. District 1?
Aye.
District 2?
Yes.
District 4?
No.
District 5?
No.
District 3? At this time, we will go on recess until 3:00 PM.
Good deal.
Let's go eat some lunch.
Yeah, let's do it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Well, the Board of County Commissioners meeting back in session. We're at Item 9, four and a half hours later. Scheduled for 11:30. Certainly want to thank our citizens who are here for a public hearing of sort, for your patience with us, and we're going to move right along. Item 9A is presented by our attorney. Proposed ordinance reference extension of local option gas taxes through August 31st, 2045. Mr. Castleberry?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am passing out an ordinance as we speak that has changed a little bit from the ordinance in your agenda packet. From the time I drafted the ordinance for inclusion in the packet, Mr. Jones informed me that we have an interlocal agreement with the municipalities on how the proceeds are shared, and it's every three years, John, that has to be recalculated. So, you will note that the ordinance I just passed out differs very slightly in the percent share of proceeds in Paragraph C of the ordinance. That's based on the most recent population and the most recent three-year review that we furnish that information to the state. So, it's very slight changes, but the, these are the current numbers, and that is what the interlocal agreement provides for.
So, in other words, Counsel, the division and the distribution formula is modernized or revised to reflect what it should be currently?
That's correct.
Thank you very kindly. Further discussion?
Yes.
On this?
So, is it going to change by that person? Is it going to change every three years? Or this is what it's going to be for the rest of the year?
Yes. No, it changes every three years.
And it says so in the ordinance?
The interlocal agreement says so, yes.
Okay.
And then we, and we have an obligation to notify the state every time it changes.
All right. This is a public hearing, so we do declare this public hearing open for any citizens who would like to discuss or have any questions on the extension of the local option gas taxes. That, again, is a thirty-year plan, and it, the previous period was September 1st, 1985, through August 31st of this year, 2015. And so, it will become effective September 1st, 2015, through August 31st, 2045. And this is not new. The four cent local option gas tax and the fifth and sixth cent local option gas tax has been in existence for quite a season now. If there are no public comments, that will go to Commissioners. Questions or any discussions for deliberation?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Mr. Castleberry, could you clarify that one more time? We're going to look at the, the proceeds, the shares, every three years, but this is for a thirty-year period?
Correct.
It changes according to the population distributed by Bieber.
Yeah, we're not necessarily looking at it. We're looking at the statistics of the population of the municipalities so that the percentages are adjusted accordingly.
Those population changes, those numbers change.
That's correct.
So, let me ask you this, because it does kind of give me, thirty years seems to be an awful long time. I mean...
It's, it's the primary, it's, it's a tax that's in effect in sixty-seven out of sixty-seven counties in Florida. With the exception of Franklin County, which for some reason only has five cents in effect, but it's the primary funder for the Department of Public Works.
Okay. All right.
Further questions? Yes, sir. Commissioner Pelosi?
I don't know if this is a Mr. Jones or Mr. Castleberry, but the, the difference, tell me, how did we come up with the different numbers here on the, the handout we just got versus the one that was in our packet?
Reviewed the population figures, the current population figures of...
That, but what the other one wasn't, reflecting that, those current populations?
The original one drafted was based on the current numbers, and it is now time, and had Finance had just recently completed the three, every three-year review, and that reflects the changes in the population.
Okay. I just want to know where we're, for sure, where we're starting out at.
Further discussion? Entertain a motion?
So move approval, Mr. Chair, of the option fuel tax.
I have a motion on the table for extension of local option gas taxes through August 31st, 2045. There's a second.
Second.
Proper second. Further discussion? Roll call vote. District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 4?
No.
District 5?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
4-1. Thank you very kindly. We will now move into the code enforcement component of our agenda. Mr. John Salmon is here, and do you have PowerPoints at all?
No.
Okay. If it's okay with everyone that's here, if we know who the citizens, I mean, the cases that have people here, I'd like to maybe take those first. Can you kind of maybe do a polling and find out who's here so we can...
I believe Ms. Chapman's here.
Okay. You said that's Chapman.
She's the first case.
Chapman. Who else?
I'm not sure who the others are.
Everybody here is Chapman on this side? Okay.
Are you here for a fine reduction?
No.
No, I didn't think so. I think she's the only person here.
We can stay in order then. Thank you so much. Okay. 10-8, fine reduction case, 2010-00324, Robert Maitier, Shirley Chapman, 1924 County Road 308. Mr. Salmon?
Now, the property was first seen on March 5th, 2010, and those violation hearing was sent out on April 13th, 2010. Special magistrate heard the case on June 17th, 2010, and found the property to be in violation, and gave the owner until August 10th, 2010, to come into compliance, or a $25 a day per fine would commence, a hundred-dollar administrative fee was also assessed. There were no changes at the site. On February 14th, 2012, the Board of County Commissioners approved abatement of the property. On September 27th of 2012, the county actually abated the property. The fine and abatement issues were still at issue. Ms. Chapman is Mr. Maitier's daughter, I believe, and he was ill. Basically, the special magistrate heard the request on April 16th, 2015, and recommended that the $2,015 abatement cost be paid in full, but that the $19,425 fine be reduced to $1,564 if it's paid within 100 days, 180 days of Board of County Commissioner action. The total of the two costs actually cover the county's expenses in this case.
Thank you, Mr. Salmon. Ms. Chapman, whoever you designated to speak on behalf of your family, please come forward. Want to assure you that there's no need for you to be nervous. We're just going to hear any thing that, do you understand the recommendation that's before us?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have questions or concerns? Okay, do you have questions or concerns about the recommendation?
Now, we do appreciate the fact that the magistrate did recommend it be... The fine be reduced. We know that the fees and all the... So to the county is due, and, you know, we're more than happy to pay that because we know that's an obligation. But we do ask that the fine be reduced, I mean forgiven.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, again, the recommendation before us is that the two thousand fifteen abatement costs be paid in full, and then the reduction of the fine is the one thousand five hundred and sixty-four. So you do understand both of those?
Yes.
Okay. A question for you, Mr. Salmon. There is on one page ninety-day and on another page one eighty there. So which accommodates the Chapman family?
I believe the original ninety-days was something that we had recommended, and the special magistrate, when he heard after we talked with Mrs. Chapman, gave her more time.
Okay, Ms. Chapman, do you need more than ninety days?
Well, there's one question I'd like to have. If you're willing to give the reduction, will it go right away to... The reason being is we'd like to sell the property, and with the fine, you know, being there, the lady I spoke with said that it would be harder to sell. But we can... We should be able to sell it within the ninety days, is what we're hoping for, so that we can pay the fines and...
Okay, so in other words, you, in order to pay the fine, you need to sell it, but in order for us to clear the...
His siblings, we may be able to come up with fines if we can't sell it in a period of time. We will get this done within the ninety days, which is what, three months?
Yes, ma'am.
If for some reason we run into difficulty, if I called you or met with you again for the extra extension, would that be possible?
I think it's gonna be safer for us to do the one eighty like the recommendation is, and that way you'll be covered. The sooner you do it, then it'll be cleared up.
Hopefully, yes, definitely.
But I think it'll be better for the grace that the magistrate has recommended to probably stay there. So you have the one eighty, and then that way, if you do it in thirty days, then everybody still will be happy. Okay? Discussion, further discussion from the commission? Yes, district one?
Mr. Chairman, it does say on the... That it's gonna be the county cost, and on the county cost sheet it says fifteen forty-four instead of fifteen sixty-four.
Okay, I'm looking at the recommended action.
Look at the last page. It has the total.
It's got two different numbers.
Okay, fifteen sixty-four.
And fifteen forty-four. Got two different numbers.
Okay. Okay. Fifteen sixty-four is on the Gillen case, okay? But I got fifteen sixty-four on my front page on the recommended actions.
Right.
So can you clear that up for us, sir?
I made a typo.
Okay, so...
Forty-four is what it...
It should be forty-four. Okay, well, the magistrate page say fifteen sixty-four as well. So is it a math issue on the reduction worksheet? Or is it an issue on the recommended?
The worksheet's right.
Okay, the worksheet's right. Okay, so we will concur with the recommendation of the special magistrate and accept two thousand fifteen dollars to cover the abatement costs and one thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars. Or you just gain twenty dollars, Ms. Chapman, in lieu of the nineteen thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollar fine. And is that the motion that we have?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve case two thousand ten dash zero zero three two four.
Do we have a proper motion?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Chapman, so much.
Thank you so much.
And what we really appreciate most is the compliance there, and we know sometime these... To get to that point is very trying and difficult. But your family has come through, and we pray that you will have a speedy sale.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks again for coming.
If you're a potential buyer, give me a call, and we can work things out.
Same thing here.
Appreciate your help so much.
Okay.
Thanks so much. All right, item B, fine reduction request, case number twenty-ten dash zero one two three. Jimmy Gillen, one thirty, First Street.
This is a request by Jimmy Gillen to get a fine reduction on case two thousand ten zero one two three one. Property was first seen in October twelfth, two thousand ten, and notice of violation was sent out on the twenty-first of October. The property had been damaged pretty badly by a fire, and notice of hearing was sent out on January eighteenth, two thousand eleven. The special magistrate found the property to be in violation on March seventeenth, two thousand eleven, and gave until May second, two thousand eleven, to bring it into compliance or a twenty-five dollar day fine would commence. A hundred dollar administrative fee was also charged. The property remained in violation. On October twelfth, two thousand twelve, Mr. Gillen and his brother came into the office and indicated that they would obtain a demolition permit and then come in for a fine reduction. The demolition permit was issued. The property was partially in compliance, but not completely. On September nineteenth, two thousand thirteen, the special magistrate ordered that the property foreclosed on or abated. The property continued to be in violation. Staff took the case before the board, and the board authorized abatement. The county then abated the property. Mr. Gillen came in and requested a fine reduction hearing after that. The special magistrate heard the request on April sixteenth and recommended that the abatement costs of two thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars be paid in full, and that the thirty thousand one hundred and fifty dollar fine be reduced to sixteen hundred and twenty-five dollars if it's paid within ninety days.
Mr. Salmon, is it true on number six in the analysis where it says value of the property? Is that accurate?
Yes.
So the value of the property is two thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars?
Yep.
I just wanna make sure that I'm reading this right.
He seems willing to pay it. He was at the hearing, and he seems to be willing to pay it, so...
There's gotta be some sentimental value, is all I can tell you.
Mr. Chairman, it looks like on page three again we have the same problem. We have the fifteen sixty-four and...
Got a calculation error. Addition error.
So the fine reduction worksheet on Gillen is saying fifteen sixty-four, and I'm looking at the magistrate...
Sixteen twenty-five, yes.
Recommended action and the... So...
So again, is the worksheet correct?
I'm not positive on that one, 'cause that's the same as the last one. And the other one's fifteen forty.
The math's not right on three, I can tell you that.
It should be accurate. I don't know, I missed it up.
It's not.
Fifteen sixty-four would be fine.
It's not correct. I guess, yes, it is. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I saw something there, I didn't see. But what... Are we going with the magistrate? Or are we going with your number?
Well, he went by my number, but the fifteen sixty-four, I think, is the correct number.
Okay.
Mr. Salmon, do we need to get some calculators in the budget? Can talk with the...
We all reached that age about glasses, huh, John?
Yep.
Okay, so that number should be fifteen sixty-four. Okay, so give me an idea... Give us an idea of if we're going with the recommended action, this person is getting ninety days. How will he be or they be served in the absence? Will it be... Is it certified?
Basically, I send them a letter indicating what your action is. We put it in our code enforcement case file on the property appraisers' system. We have rechecks, and then we check every month to see if anything's come in. Sometimes they come in early, most of the time they don't. But on the date that it's supposed to be in, we'll check it. And if it's not in, then we have to go a different route.
So does it go out certified or does it go out regular mail? Does the notice of our action today go out certified? Or does it just go out in regular mail?
I have been sending out regular, I can send it out certified.
I'm just wondering, I mean, very few that are not here. And since this one is not here, in order for us...
Well, there were a couple of people here earlier, but they were in agreement with the special magistrate, and I think they got tired of sitting through it. So they asked me if they could leave, and I said, sure.
I mean, that's fine, it's no penalty, certainly. But I just wanna make sure that a person don't use it against us, that they did not actually get, you know, get the information and then come back for another extension or something on that order.
Yep.
What's the pleasure of the commission?
Move approval.
Proper motion?
Second.
And a second for case two-ten, two thousand ten oh one two three one, with the recommended action, with the correction of the reduction of the fine to one thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars. A proper motion, a second, further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Item C, fine reduction request, case number two thousand fourteen double oh one twenty-five. Dubey Rabbin Dranoff, one fourteen, Country Living Lane.
This was a case that was started as a result of a neighborhood sweep that we were requested to do, I think, by Mr. Harvey. This is another case where we worked with the property appraiser staff to figure out which property the building was actually on. A letter of unsafe building was sent out to the owner. The owner called on May thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, and wanted to board, just board up the structure until he could sell it. He also wanted the county to guarantee that the property would remain in good condition once he got in that, in the boarded up state. The case went before the special magistrate on October sixteenth, two thousand fourteen, and he gave the owner until January fifteenth, two thousand fifteen, to bring the property into compliance or a twenty-five dollar day fine would commence. A hundred dollar administrative fee was also charged. On December thirty-first, two thousand fourteen, the owner called and requested more time as he's having difficulty obtaining a demolition contractor that he could afford. Staff told him we had no ability to grant an extension. The demolition contract was obtained on January seventh, two thousand fifteen, and the permit was filed out on February twelfth, two thousand fifteen. Mr. Rabbin Dranoff requested a fine reduction hearing. The special magistrate heard the request on April sixteenth, two thousand fifteen, and recommended that the four hundred and twenty-five dollar fine not be reduced.
Mr. Chairman?
So the worksheet...
Here we go again.
Says seven oh four.
Well, that's because... That's the money we have in it. But the actual fine from the day it started is four hundred and...
Four twenty-five is the number.
Twenty-five dollars. So it's... We didn't go past that. The state where they would be...
Second.
Proper motion and a second, further discussion?
Yeah, I wanted to...
Along the way?
Aren't we trying to get our money back, though, at least? So why are we accepting less money?
Well, in this case, the fine started on such-and-so date and ended on such-and-so date, which was before...
Okay.
We could garner our cost back.
All right, thank you.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. D, fine reduction request, case number two thousand nine dash double oh fifty-eight. Mark and Cindy Hesterberg, one thirty-seven, Raleigh Drive.
The property was first seen on January twenty-eighth, two thousand nine, and notice of violation hearing was sent out on February fourth, two thousand nine. Case went before the special magistrate on April sixteenth, two thousand nine. He found the property to be in violation and gave the owner until May eighteenth, two thousand nine, to bring the property into compliance or a twenty-five dollar day fine would commence. A hundred dollar administrative fee was also levied. Nothing happened on the property for a few years. The property went to a tax deed sale on August fourteenth, two thousand thirteen. We received information that new owners on the... New owners bought the property on September tenth, two thousand thirteen. The new owners at first were non-responsive. Staff finally made contact with them on January twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen. They said they were aware of the code enforcement case, but all they do is buy property and sell it. They ended up selling it to the Hesterbergs. They purchased the property and took care of the problems, got the permits to solve the problem on March third, two thousand fifteen. Chat, staff rechecked the property and found it to be in compliance. They requested a fine reduction hearing on April sixteenth, two thousand fifteen. The special magistrate heard the request for a fine reduction and recommended that the fifty-two thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollar fine be reduced to two hundred dollars if it's paid within forty-five days for the reason that their new owners, they weren't involved in the property at all until well after the case had gone forward.
So the group, they say they just buy it and sell it?
Yep.
They... They don't understand?
They don't what?
Understand?
They understand, but they don't care.
Okay. For the record.
Did they disclose this to the new owners, or do you not know?
They said they did. The new owners contacted us shortly after they bought it, so I'm guessing they must have... They have to by law, but that doesn't mean they do it.
Fifty-two thousand dollar fine on a sixteen thousand dollar property.
Well, if we have a business, a legitimate business, that's in the business of buying and selling and don't care, somehow or another, the magistrate and the all concerned need to understand they need to pay the cost to be the boss, if that's how they're gonna roll. I mean, I don't know who this group is and what they represent, but it doesn't make me feel good if they're gonna brag and boast about this is how they do business out there. And I hope that anybody that will purchase from them will be on guard to know that this is how they roll.
Right.
Because there, to me, was no obligation on Putnam County's part to ignore the cost that we have in this property. The sympathy and the empathy is all good and understandable. But at the same time, citizens who... Who jump up and do this thing right, and again, don't wanna punish the people who bought it, but the people who bought it need to be diligent and understand also.
Yeah, the people that bought on a taxi sale, we need to figure out how to get them somehow so that they don't do that anymore.
Okay, so...
And you know, my concern, Mr. Salmon, is what we talked about the other day when we met at the conference room. You know, we should be trying to get our cost back, at least have a minimum set there. You know, but it's unfair for these people to have to pay it, but...
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve case two thousand nine zero zero five eight.
Proper motion?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign, hearing none. Motion carries. Item E, fine reduction request, case twenty thirteen dash double oh forty-one. Arthur Southher, five oh six Quail Hollow Road. Page one twenty-three in the packet.
This property was first seen on January twenty-fifth, two thousand fifteen, and they found a large accessory structure that was built without permits. Notice of violation and hearing was sent out on March fifteenth, two thousand thirteen. Case went before the special magistrate on June twentieth, two thousand thirteen, and he found the property to be in violation and gave the owner until December twenty, two thousand thirteen, to obtain the permits and bring the property into compliance or a twenty-five dollar day fine would... Per day fine would commence. A hundred dollar administrative fee was also assessed. It went back to the special magistrate on March twenty, two thousand fourteen, and he ordered the lien to be recorded. On September eighteenth, two thousand fourteen, the special magistrate heard a request by staff to abate or foreclose on the property, and he gave said order. A permit was finally obtained on January twenty-first, two thousand fifteen. The permit was filed on March second, two thousand fifteen. The owner requested a fine reduction. Special magistrate heard the request for a fine reduction on April sixteenth, two thousand fifteen. He did not concur with staff's recommendation that it be a thousand dollars. He changed it to five hundred dollars if it's paid within sixty days.
Thank you, Mr. Salmon. We do... I'm tossing it around in my mind, I guess piggybacking off of Commissioner Harvey. Are we randomly just, you know, is it a straw poll or something that we're using to... For the magistrate? I mean, is there any formula at all? Because it seems as if we're randomly subsidizing every case. And I know each case is different, Because it seems as if we're randomly subsidizing every case, and I know each case is different, but at the same time, to me, the starting point is the cost to the county, or the cost that's been incurred as a starting point. And I hear you saying a thousand dollars on this particular case, but I'm not following a specific pattern on these cases. I don't see where there's a formula or something there, and that, to me, if we just random, someone can cry foul further down the road, that we're randomly setting, you know, I guess these fine reduction...
On cases where the person that's involved is the person that was in charge of the property when the violation occurred, we're pretty much at least gonna try and get our money back, which is why our recommendation, staff's recommendation, was a thousand dollars. Mr. Southher was at the hearing in front of the magistrate, and for whatever reason, he, he got the special magistrate to buy his story, and so the special magistrate asked me if I would accept five hundred dollars, and I said, "Well," I had recommended a thousand, "but you, you have a right to override me."
Right.
And I said, "So, if that's what you want to do, I'm okay with it. That's, that's your choice."
Don't be so nice.
Yeah.
Our procedure in the past has been to collect the outstanding, the actual cost, what the administration costs and the trips out to the property.
On, on cases where we have people who buy the property through tax deed and solve the problem and deal with that, those are the ones that we've been coming in with very low prices, or there's another one that's coming up here where the gentleman was involved with the property, but he bought a used mobile home from somebody that didn't have a title, and he went through heck's half acre to try and get a title. It took him months and months and months, and that's what, the thing was, that's why that one we've recommended it'd be reduced down pretty low, but...
Well, I mean, I don't have a problem, and I'm certainly not trying to be the judge for the magistrate, but at the same time, I think that there needs to be a clear policy that the magistrate understand, and when we veer from that policy, I believe that if a person is being granted grace or mercy and is the same owner, that they need to demonstrate some hardship.
Right.
Because they creating us some hardship. Commissioner Pellicia.
Yes, you said a thousand dollars, and then over on your worksheet, I see nine twenty-seven.
Yep. Nine twenty-seven is the actual cost we have, but I, I felt that they pulled the, they built the building without a permit. I didn't think being over nine twenty-seven was necessarily a bad thing.
Well, as Commissioner Lavelle said, I agree. We've always tried to get our hard costs back, you know, when, when you've got somebody in there trying to do the right thing.
Yep.
Or even be a little more lenient with those folks.
He told the special magistrate that he lost his job, and I think that's probably what got the special magistrate to, to reduce it further, but...
I guess some of that testimony would help us to be merciful too, but...
Yep.
Since we don't have it. What's the pleasure of the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I want to step outside the box here. I'd like to approve, make a motion to approve two thousand thirteen zero zero four one with a fine of nine twenty-seven for a hundred and twenty days.
Have a proper motion on the floor.
I'm not quite clear on something here. This Mr....
Motion dies for lack of a second. Go ahead, Mr. Pellicia.
Okay, I might have seconded if I...
Time ran out.
Never mind. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not big on, I'm not big on it. Is Mr. Southher, is he the new owner or the former owner, or what is he?
He's the owner that owned it, he's the one that built the...
Since time...
Yep, since the case started.
Okay. So, he's known all about these problems and...
Yes, sir.
Well, we don't know his story.
Right.
Would've been nice if he'd have been here today.
He was given a notice.
Sir?
He was given a notice.
So, we knew whether or not he was here earlier.
I didn't see him, but that doesn't mean he wasn't here. There's a lot of people here. I didn't scan everybody.
What's the pleasure of the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we follow the recommended action by the special magistrate.
Motion on the floor, proper second. We concur with the recommendation of the special magistrate and accept the five hundred dollars in lieu of the ten thousand eight hundred and twenty-five-dollar fine if paid within sixty days. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item F, fine reduction request, case number twenty fourteen dash zero two ninety-six, Brett McQuade, one twenty Ellis Drive, page one twenty-six in your packet.
This property was first seen on April eighth, two thousand fourteen. Some discussion with the original owner followed. A notice of violation hearing was sent out. The case was heard by the special magistrate on July seventeenth, two thousand fourteen. He found the property being in violation, gave the owners until September second, two thousand fourteen, to bring the property into compliance, or a twenty-five-dollar day fine would commence. Hundred-dollar administrative fee was also charged. Nothing happened. A demolition permit was pulled finally on December twenty-first, two thousand fourteen. Property was in compliance on January twelfth, two thousand fifteen. Brett McQuade came in on March twenty-seventh, two thousand fifteen, indicated he was the owner and requested a fine reduction hearing. Special magistrate heard the request on April sixteenth, two thousand fifteen, and recommended the county accept a hundred dollars in lieu of thirty-seven hundred dollar fine if it's paid within thirty days. Mr. McQuade was not the owner at the time that the property was in violation.
What's the correct spelling of his surname? We have it spelled two different ways.
Oh, yes, you're right.
Q U A D or Q U A I G? Q U A I G?
Q U A I D.
Quague or McQuague?
D or G on the end?
McQuade.
The G on the end?
A I G.
A I G, okay. All right. Okay, so, just again, a little clerical revision on the recommendation before it's filed away. So, in this particular case, the one hundred dollar is, again, an administrative fee, but the hard cost, again, is eight ninety-six. It's going to help this board, even though the summary highlights look good and sound good, but apparently whatever testimony that's going before the magistrate, so we can at least follow the train of thought. I think it's gonna have to be maybe two more sentences at least, so that we can at least get a better feel for what he know that we don't.
Only thing I can say in probe of this is it appears, if I'm reading this correctly, that he took care of it in a pretty timely manner compared to most cases that come before us.
And he wasn't involved in it until after everything happened, too.
What's the pleasure of the commission?
I'm gonna move approval strictly on that basis there.
Motion. And a second, that we concur with the recommendation of special magistrate and accept one hundred dollars in lieu of the three thousand seven hundred dollar fine. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Case number twenty thirteen dash double oh two one, heirs of Alan Dillard, one seventeen, Matthews Road, page one twenty-nine in your packet.
This is the case I was alluding to before. Mr. Dillard agreed, if we found an unpermitted mobile home on the property, agreed to obtain a permit, notice of violation, and hearing was set out on January fourteenth, two thousand thirteen, went before the special magistrate on March twenty-first, two thousand thirteen, and found the property being in violation. He gave until May twenty-first, two thousand thirteen, to bring the property into compliance, or a twenty-five-dollar day fine would commence. Hundred-dollar administrative fee was also charged. Mr. Dillard had a very difficult time getting a title to the permit, which, without a title, he couldn't get a building permit. Once that problem was resolved, he took care of the problem immediately and, and brought the property into compliance. And the special magistrate heard this request on April sixteen, two thousand fifteen, and recommended that the board accept two hundred dollars in lieu of the ten thousand one hundred dollar fine. It's paid within forty-five days because of the title problem that the man had.
Pleasure of the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of case number two thousand thirteen zero zero two one.
Proper motion.
Second.
Second, discussion. All in favor of the recommended action of the special magistrate to accept two hundred dollars in lieu of the ten thousand one hundred dollar fine? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign, hearing none. Motion carries. Fine reduction, case number two thousand eleven dash zero two eight six, Philip and Barbara Jordan, twenty forty Bellamy Road, page one thirty-two in your packet.
This property was first seen on April twenty-fifth, two thousand eleven. A courtesy notice was sent out to the property owners on April twenty-eighth, two thousand eleven. We got no response from the owners. Notice of violation was sent out on September sixth, two thousand eleven. Notice of hearing was sent out on November second, two thousand eleven. On January nineteenth, two thousand twelve, the special magistrate heard the case and found the property to be in violation, and gave the owners until May fifth, two thousand twelve, to bring the property into compliance, or a twenty-five-dollar day fine would commence. Hundred-dollar administrative fee was also levied. Nothing happened after that. The case went before the special magistrate on the nineteenth of April, two thousand twelve, found the property still being in violation, and ordered the lien to be recorded. On October seventeenth, two thousand thirteen, the special magistrate ordered the property to be abated or foreclosed upon. On March twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen, the board of county commissioners authorized abatement. Mr. Jordan called staff and indicated he would like to repair the structure. Ms. Suarez gave him until mid-September to do so, or they would, we would proceed with abatement. Mr. Jordan contacted the staff in September, indicated he was gonna try to obtain a permit. Staff discussed the case with Mr. Hammond and said that if no permit was obtained and work wasn't started by October first, that we would proceed with abatement. Nothing happened. Property was finally abated on November twenty-first, two thousand fourteen. The special magistrate heard his request and recommended that the abatement lien be paid in full and that the fine be reduced from twenty-four thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars to twelve hundred and twenty-five dollars. It's paid within a hundred and eighty days.
Well, the numbers do match.
And the dates.
On this, and so, what's the pleasure of the commission?
Move approval staff recommendations.
Have a proper motion.
Second.
And a second, that the staff recommendation, which is the recommendation from the special magistrate, the amount of one thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars from the total amount of the twenty-four thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries.
He was actually at the hearing and was willing to pay this, even though the property's only worth two thousand dollars, but he lives in Minnesota and realizes it's his responsibility, so he said he would be more than happy to pay it.
Bless you. Must've moved.
Just one point of clarification, Brian Hammond's Planning and Development Services Director. Ever since I've been here, this is eight years now, we have always been told by the commission, "We're after compliance. We're not after the money."
Correct.
So, understanding that, you know, we'd be happy to throw the book at everybody. That's not a problem. That's what we do. You know, are you telling us that you wish for us to start at the full amount owed? And then see where the, again, anything we give you is a recommendation. Anything the magistrate gives you is a recommendation. All of our liens are in favor of the board, so you can do anything you want to with them. But if you have some idea as far as where you want us to start, if you want us to stick to the full amount owed, we will do that. Just give us a little bit of direction on that.
And again, just speaking as one of the five, if there is a formula that simply says, "Okay, this person is the new owner, they were not the original owner." If this person is the owner that's been there all along, and we've got some, basically, what I would call non-compliant, just, again, don't care, and it's not punitive per se, but at the same time, I think that if there's a formula that you all are using when you're going to the magistrate, if the magistrate, again, gets some testimony that would cause him to veer from it, but I just think that the original, we do want compliance, no question about that, but at the same time, as we have heard from other hearings, that the taxpayers are now paying for, you know, these non-compliant citizens kind of thing, and I do understand your department is not a money-making department, but I think...
We understand.
Yes, sir.
We understand. I just want you to be, to understand that there are all, every circumstance you can think of, every excuse, every mitigating factor that you can think of is out there.
Right.
We hear it on a daily basis. So, again...
But I mean, it's just like when, when, when the trooper stopped somebody and they tell them they're on their way to the hospital, but the hospital is in the opposite direction kind of thing. We do, we do understand that. So, I, I just think for the basic A, B, C, D cases, if, if there's a formula that kind of sort of sets the stage for you all to go before the magistrate with, to me, and again, let's hear from the others.
Yeah, that, that would put me basically to sticking to the full amount owed at that time, and then let the magistrate give you a recommendation beyond that, and then you decide what you want to do with it.
When you say throw the book, that, that scares me.
Well, I'm just saying, ask for the full amount owed.
Well, when I, when I say full amount, I'm talking about cost incurred, not necessarily the amount of the fine. I want to make sure.
Understood. That, that's what I'm referring to, not...
Yeah, and that's what I'm referring to, just the hard cost.
I like it the way it is.
You like it the way it is?
I do. If we do it the way it is, and I don't want conflicting amounts like we had today, that was kind of odd, but...
I apologize for that.
It's okay. And I have to say this, I like the photographs, what we're dealing with.
Yeah.
Are they costly? Does it cost you more to send staff out and take them?
No, we have, we have to take them anyway for the case file.
I think the system we had with the photographs, when applied correctly, was just fine.
Okay.
I think that there are often extenuating circumstances, and we just need to understand what they are. So, if he goes down from that figure, it'd be nice to know, due to unemployment, for some job, whatever.
I, I think if we know that staff is going in the room with the magistrate and the citizen, that they know where they need to start, and even if their recommendation changes based on testimony or personal exchange with them, as long as we understand the rhyme to the reason, you know, we can relate to it. It's not selective, it's just a reality check. This is what this particular person, you know, have going on. I mean, whether it's a widow, a widower that's there, or a person who actually lost their job, because, I mean, you know, this is not your first rodeo, you know when a person is filibustering, and I just want to make sure that it's equitable and that there is some kind of formula so that the conspiracy theory people don't come back and say, "You did it for this one, but you didn't do it." We always have a track, you know, to operate from.
Understood.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay. Thank you very kindly. We will move forward to item eleven, eleven eight, update on St. John's River stakeholders, a letter of requests. Mr. Leary?
Yes, sir. There was a meeting in the early part of April, attended by representatives from Clay County, Marion County, Putnam County, I think from the Jacksport, the Jack's Chamber, I think the Riverkeeper was there, and various staff people from different organizations. What was discussed at that meeting generally was the fact that there was not going to be any federal funding available for the deepening of the port in Jacksonville until at least twenty twenty-three, that there had been no local dollars committed for that project, and that the science that had been generated relative to that entire issue, peripheral to the deepening of the port, was somewhat dated, and that the economic science was even more dated. So, the group among them concluded that it might be appropriate to ask the legislature for an appropriation to update both the science and the economic science, so that more reliable data might be available upon which some decisions could conceivably be made about various directions that different parties might wish to take a stance upon in the future. That's, thus the reasoning for this draft letter that is in your agenda, to see if parties were willing to sign off on sending a letter requesting an appropriation from the legislature, of course, since they adjourned and are coming back into session, who knows what a request for funding might, what might happen to a request for funding at this point in time, but that's the, that's the rationale behind this letter.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator.
What transpired at that meeting of stakeholders.
One thing that, for sure, you know, the concern has been whether or not we were at the table. This letter obviously does show that we were at the table. This letter does not say that we are for or against anything per se, other than getting a revision pretty much of the stats that's related. On a separate note, we, my feeling is, the deepening of the port is not an if, it's a when. You know, it's not if it's gonna happen, it's when it's going to happen, and obviously it's gonna be largely tied into federal and state dollars there. I read with interest, with keen interest, that both the incumbent and the challenger for the mayorship of Jacksonville, when the question was asked concerning Rodman as mitigation, their response was very radically affirmative that they will support and pursue Rodman as the mitigation strategy. They're, that's separate from this, but I just thought that we should be aware of that. But this letter, to me, I, I do support that we need current information so that we're not dealing with opinions. It needs to be a revised current study. District one.
Okay. So... Okay, so this letter is from Saint John's River stakeholders.
Stakeholders of all of those people.
And that's us.
Saint John's, Marion, Clay, all, all of the counties in the region.
Okay, so we would be signing this letter too?
With this board's consent.
That's why we have it before us. Well, this part, I didn't know who it was from, I'm just, okay.
District Two.
I don't agree at all, I don't think Robyn Reservoir should be a mitigation piece in the deepening of the Jacksport whatsoever. I do would support an economic report that would bolster funding to improve Rodman, to get even more people to use it. But, uh, as far as a mitigation piece, no, not on board.
Yes, sir, and I, and I, I agree, and I don't want to compare the two, I just thought I should mention that, uh, there, but this letter certainly is not.
I can agree with you that this would set the record straight, but from the get-go, Rodman should have never been offered in any deal to deepen the Jacksonville port, they're eighty miles apart, nothing to do with each other, other than the riverkeeper would like to extort us or colonize us, is what I like to say, that, uh, we weren't at the table, and, um, I'm not up for colonizing, sorry.
Thank you, sir, District Two has spoken, District Four.
Well, thank you, District Two, and I agree wholeheartedly. Um, Lake Akawaha, Rodman Reservoir is not, is not up for extortion on this matter. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers clearly took it off the table because it didn't need to be part of the mitigation plan. I have no problem, as I told the Florida Times Union, that we would be, uh, Rodman Reservoir would be, Save Rodman would be very welcome to a new updated study, but only an independent study. I think we would have to go outside of Florida to find that, that university that could possibly look at that, but I don't think we could find one here in the state of Florida that would have the ability to look at all the sides on this issue. I believe there's tremendous benefits, not only to Lake Akawaha and Rodman Reservoir, but for Western Putnam County, Eastern Clay County, and that needs to be looked at. Our lake levels and water levels are not near where they should be, and we start taking water out of there, and we're going to find ourselves in a, in a deeper mess. And then you have to factor in what Marion County wants to pump out over a half a million gallons of water out of the Akawaha before it ever gets to Lake Akawaha. So we have some serious issues, and that's why I do support a study, but not, uh, anything local that would be done by our local universities or colleges.
Thank you, sir, District Five.
I'll be very brief, uh, I, when somebody has said everything you want to say, I'd just say this, amen District Two and amen District Four, I'm done.
Okay, again, let's be mindful of the fact that, uh, the decision, uh, on all of these, uh, concerns, very intimate concerns of our citizens, as well as us as the county legislators, will be made in Tallahassee. Not in Jacksonville, uh, not in, um, Greenco Springs, not in Saint Augustine, not Orange Park, not Palatka, uh, not in Ocala. They will be made, uh, in Tallahassee, so, uh, again, whatever the position is, I just need to make sure that, uh, we, uh, on board with, uh, with, with, with this, so that they do know that we do want the facts. Now, as far as who they're going to, uh, decide is best impartial and, and fair, uh, in making this happen, I do want to make sure that we know that we can voice our opinions, but we really don't have a dog in that fight.
What if the university in North Florida sends their marine science team out to do this study?
Over with.
And that's very likely going to be.
I see it's going to be.
They've already done one.
Yes.
Shows.
It's not fair.
Well.
Sorry, John Delaney is completely on the other side, college president, and, uh, we can't accept that.
Well, I, I, I think again, that the legislative, uh, leaders in each of the, these, these counties concerned, now that we're at the table, we know that, uh, and, and, and I for one, representing our county, is not going to, uh, sit back, and I'm sure that the five of us won't sit back, and the fives of Marion County, the five in Clay, the five in Saint John's, or seven, however many they have, uh, are not going to sit back and just let this happen. Let's keep in mind, had we not gone down the road that we've gone down to get to where we are now, this thing would be much further down the road. So I, I think that we're, we're at the table now, and I just want us to be at the table and continue to, to take the position that we have with an understanding that we have to do what with, is within our jurisdiction, uh, Mr. Leary.
Well, I was just going to add that the discussion of what party that was going to perform the update, if the funding was achieved, was going to be the water management district, Saint John's Water Management District.
Okay.
Cause they had done apparently the original studies that are currently outdated.
So it'll be basically allocated.
Particularly the economic, particularly the economic piece.
Well.
Well, and with the, uh, senior staff adjustments there, then it should be unbiased, right?
Get one thing.
New group.
Not necessarily.
I stand strong, I don't think it should be a mitigation piece at all.
Yeah.
Uh, again, uh, we, we share, uh, in the strong feelings about the differentiation and the separation and alienation of, of, of those, but right now, if we just dig in and say what we don't like, they're going to steamroll us, and we need to face that reality. District One.
I was going to say, when we were in Tallahassee, there was a professor there from University of North Florida who had just done an extensive study on the values of what did the county gain with the values of the waterfront homes because they're assessed it more, and all of the economic parts of it. So are you saying that Saint John's River Water Management District also did an economic study on values of what the river brings?
I'll just tell you what I heard at this meeting, and that was that everybody at that meeting seemed to agree that if funding were obtained, that it would be the Water Management District that would do the updating of the economic piece and the sci, and the, and the other, and the scientific piece.
Okay.
And please be aware of the fact that, uh, President Joe Pickens is chairing this meeting, um, and Mr. Former Commissioner, State Rep. Kelly Smith, they are at the table representing Putnam County, even though Mr. Pickens is the chair, I mean, obviously, it's not going to be, um, so Putnam County is represented with three compared to the others with two with him being the chair, so I, I think that at this point, uh, and, and I certainly did not want to stir up, uh, the emotions of, of us who, who do have some serious positions here, but I don't see the harm in supporting, um, the, the letter that is, uh, that's, that's going forth, so that we, we can have updated information. And I think that, uh, what District Two is saying, District Four, Five, Three, One, all of us are saying, is that we want, um, an impartial, uh, report from an impartial, uh, contractor, uh, and, and, and I think that's fair, but let's not, they got to get it funded and financed, and then certainly I think we have time to, to say, uh, please be selective, and let's just make sure that the facts are, are where they need to be.
Mr. Chairman, I have one last question, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, Ms. Harris, go ahead. Uh, you, Mr. Leary, you said that funding for the federal dollars would not be available for another eight years, is that correct?
That's what they said at this, at this meeting, uh, that the federal government had indicated that there was not going to be any federal funding until twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the question that I had is, um, where in here do you feel that it says it's to be used for mitigation?
No, I was again, I was separating my comments from this letter, it's not in this letter.
This strongly alludes to it, and it's been the overarching theme of the riverkeeper through this whole process. I mean, they've got failing septic tanks, people dying every summer in Jacksonville from vi, you know, bacteria-borne vi, vi, viruses in the river. She should be concentrating on that and not our clean, pristine reservoir, I'm sorry. It should not be a mitigation piece, and I can't look at it any differently. I understand what you're trying to do, but I want it off the table.
Then why don't we change the wording in the letter?
This letter is, is, the whole region is signing the letter, and Mr. Leary, uh.
There is a typo in it too.
There you go.
That makes it null and void.
Where, where is the typo?
Okay, third paragraph up, the study would be built, the word be is left out, the last part of the sentence.
Yep. Understand what I'm saying, uh, we, we just shouldn't be, be at this status. We should be warring with these people to get this off the table, it's ridiculous, and, I mean, they have nothing to do with each other. Get her to concentrate back on her job, she's hired by the metro Jacksonville area to, to straighten the river out up there, you know? We, we don't go messing around in her backyard, she doesn't need to be in ours.
Well, I agree with you, I just was wondering if there was a way to save this without.
Well, I like a strong letter then, I like your idea, but.
We are, well, we're, we're, we're at the table, and so right now, I would rather be at the table, uh, and, and, and stick with our position than for us not to be at the table, and if we just flat out say, take it off the table, then we're moving ourselves from the table, and I just.
We're not going to leave, we're not going to leave the table.
Table, but I would like that coalition, or, uh, Put, well, at least the representatives from Putnam County that you just named to take a strong letter of opposition back, just to take it off the table, it shouldn't be even discussed. I mean, I don't, they're pulling us in to a losing battle.
Well, I think that now that we have a senator, and that we have, well, we've had a representative, um, uh, for the, for the, the district, um, that, that's who needs to be our mouthpiece, I think that, uh, that would be the only way for us to, um, to make sure that our voice is loud and clear, and that they understand our position, because again, when it's all said and done, nobody at the table has a vote on this, nobody at the table. Yeah, nobody at this table or the table from the stakeholders. The vote is going to be in Tallahassee, so my thing is, uh, we can be firm, we can stay on point, we can make, make our voices as loud as possible, but, uh, again, if we're just adamantly opposing, uh, I mean, we want it, we want it to be off the table, but it's on the table. So do we face reality, or do we act as if?
I'm saying our approach is wrong, you know, you're agreeing to go and discuss this.
But, but the study can only strengthen what we know.
Depends on who does the study.
Well, again, we don't want to jump through that hoop, let's go ahead and be.
I've been turning into some politics that we don't know enough about from this little letter, to be committing ourselves to this degree, and not losing that reservoir by not having enough information in front of us.
Well, we're going to lose it if we go in by old science, we're going to definitely lose it if we, if we don't have information that, as I heard, uh, Commissioner, uh, say earlier, she got to be able to hang the hook or hook, whatever terminology she says, right now, we need a fresh hook.
Well, then why don't we?
Any anglers at the table here?
Yeah, we can form a, I think we can do with everything that Commissioner Libley's saying here, and just say, we support this as long as Lake Akawaha, Rodman Reservoir is not part of the mitigation, we support a study from an independent outside source. I do believe water management is highly political, and will do exactly what anybody needs them to do, and that's why we've seen shakeups like we've seen. We were in Tallahassee, we heard Hans Tansler speak.
I think you equip me, as your current chair, with a letter that is drafted, uh, you know, by our administrator to express these feelings, but that still should not get in the way of this letter, I think, when we go back to the table, because again, it's not like, that group is in recess.
When you going back to the table, Mr. Chairman?
I don't know when the next meeting will be.
All right, so we could probably make some different types up, and then we could have them for our next meeting.
Well, I'm sorry.
They're going back in session in June.
Well, again, but they're going back to, to get a budget passed, this is not getting ready to happen per se. And, and the truth of the whole matter is this, I'm being real about this thing, if all we do is say, we don't want it and, and disconnect it now, we're going to be the lone voice, because Marion County, Saint John's County, Clay County, all of those other counties are signing off on this.
Saint John's sided with us, Marion County has not sided, Clay County won't take a position on it.
And you're telling me that they're not going to try to bring this up at the end of the special session?
Sure they are, the twelfth hour, we got lobbyists waiting for it.
Yeah.
We know it's going to happen.
Yeah.
We're fully prepared for that.
Okay, so what is going to happen?
They're going to find, that, that money for funding is already sitting there, I can tell.
Okay, so our issue is not the study, it's who conducts the study, so why can't our energy go on making it known that we want an impartial, uh, uh, study?
Right.
Done, to me, that's the point.
And we also want to rea.
Study going to happen, we just want the right people to do the study, sounds like to me.
And we want to reiterate our point that Rodman, Lake Akawaha is off the table for mitigation, period.
For the Port of Jacksonville.
Right.
Or we should sue the Port of Jacksonville for saltwater intrusion.
Exactly.
I agree with.
And our sport fishing industry.
I agree with Commissioner Flag, um, I think, I do think, uh, an independent study is going to support our point, and we just need to reiterate to them that, you know, we, that's what we'll, we'll stand by, but again, as Commissioner Libley says, we're, we're not putting the reservoir up as a pond, but we don't want, uh, your boys doing the study, so to speak.
There you go.
We'll see advice, Chairman, can I get a motion in a second?
I make a motion that Mr. Leary drafts up a letter, or Mr. Castleberry.
I'm going to motion first on this letter that, that, uh.
I make a motion that we do not support that current letter as written.
Can I, can I?
Mr. Mr. Leary.
Well, I, I just want to make every, make sure everyone understands, I didn't write this letter.
Right.
Right.
This is a regional letter.
Yeah, a, and it's been, it's a letter that was, has been vetted by all of the parties that I mentioned earlier, so it's something that everybody has vetted and agreed upon, I didn't write it.
Yeah, the original language you would not have liked, period.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have enough information from that regional letter composer, and I can't make an intelligent decision on this.
There's a motion on the floor.
The problem is, we've been, we've been sending.
It's too vague.
Die.
There you go.
Good, yeah. All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Problem is, we've been sending you in to the meetings, but we don't really know what's happening, and we're, we just have the same old attitude. We don't know how you've reached what you have, and, um.
By pretty much doing the same thing we did when we had the town hall meeting, slowing the train down, and the truth of the whole matter, just as our administrator said, first of all, in order for the port to be deepened, it's not going to be the mayor and the count, the city council in Jacksonville that make that decision, millions of dollars from the federal level is going to take place, the federal government. We don't know who the president will be, we don't know who will be in Congress, that process is much more cumbersome than any process that we've gone through in this room. Tallahassee, again, that process, I don't know how to get anything done in e, any of those places, Tallahassee or Washington, for that matter. All I'm saying is, this is a revision, uh, there, to protecting the health of the Saint John's River and its tributaries. I don't know who have ulterior motives, I know what our motive is, I know that we want to protect the Saint John's River, we want to protect Lake Akawaha, all of those places, but for us to say, don't study it, I think that's a problem. I think if we say we are concerned about who does the study, I think we're in line.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that our county attorney draft the letter with our concerns of who does the study, okay? And that the mitigation for Lake Akawaha is off the table, and bring some samples back at the next meeting, then we can vet it properly then at that point.
Point of order, that is a mute point if this document in front of you does not at least have consensus. Why are we telling, why would we tell them that we're concerned about who's going to do the study if we don't even sign off on the fact, okay, let's do the study, but we are concerned, and we can attach our concern, uh, there. Again, them people are recessed, some of them at the beach, some of them out of state, ain't no telling what they doing.
I can't feel any different.
That's my.
Counsel.
I mean, the letter itself says they're going to study, says they're going to, the study's going to include the potential breaching of the dam.
Yeah, I see that now.
Yeah.
And it says that's going to be part of that.
It's because that is their position, our position is that we want the study, keep in mind, two people who have been in Tallahassee representing Putnam County is sitting at that table. Joe Pickens, Kelly Smith. Do those names ring any bell?
I've talked to both of them.
Okay, those individuals are genuinely concerned about Rodman Reservoir, Lake Akawaha. We're not in the dark. They do need to come, perhaps, uh, and shed even more light, uh, there. Again, I, I don't know what else I can tell us, other than what I've told us. It's not a military secret. We know they have linked. Had we not had the town hall meeting, and this, they could have cared less about whether we were there or not. We're there now, and so, to me, this is not endorsing them doing anything to Rodman. This is endorsing the study.
I've made my motions, made my case.
But shouldn't we at some point let them know that, you know, we're not against the study, but we want it done by an independent third party?
That's why if we, if we approve the letter, we immediately draft the letter and indicate, before this is ever even funded, that that's what we want. That letter is certified and certifiable for us to make sure that they understand, uh, if, in fact, you do fund a new study, we want you to understand our concern about partiality, and, uh, selected people who cannot give a fair and impartial, uh, result.
Mr. Chairman, I don't wanna beat a dead horse here, but
Please don't.
I, I know, I won't. Are any other county commissions debating this letter right now, currently, like we are?
Every, every county that is a stakeholder has this same letter being presented. When it's being presented?
We don't know.
I have no clue. Marion County has it, St. John's County have it, Clay County has it, uh, and all of those people sitting at the same table.
I think it's prudent that we go back and say, you know, we appreciate the letter, but we have some changes that we'd like to make, and we're not willing to sign this particular letter that's sitting on our desk right now. That's all I'm saying.
If the changes, if it was a Putnam County product, we wouldn't be having this discussion.
It is a Putnam County.
Regional, no sir. You've got that wrong.
It's our water.
Okay. We can think it's our water all we want. It's the state of Florida's water, not Putnam County's water. What part of that don't we understand?
We get it.
It's the state of Florida, and we can cry all we want to. If we don't stay at this table and play ball, then we could sit up in the stands and watch the score. That's what, that's what we can do.
Let's make changes, or you brought it before the board. We make the changes, we send the letter back as the changes we made. That's how I look at it.
Apparently, I'm not reaching my colleagues today. This is about a study.
Yeah, I can't agree to this language.
Okay, well, what part of the language can't you guys agree on?
All of it.
So, the whole thing is-
I've said my piece, and I'm done with it.
That's, that's been our Putnam County problem. We are at the table now. We can't be done with it.
We got that. We got that.
Do we, do we need a motion to either agree to join this letter or not, one way or the other?
Well, I can't support this letter the way it's written exactly, but with some modifications, I could. You know, I don't know if we can, can we compose our own letter and send that back to them instead of endorsing this?
I wouldn't necessarily compose a letter. I would edit this one, because again, all of these counties and all of those people-
That's what my motion's been, Mr. Chairman.
What's your motion, sir?
My motion was to, to adapt that letter to Lake Akawaha and Rodman Reservoir was not part of the mitigation.
That's what the study is on.
And that we want an independent outside firm studying this.
Okay. But if you don't support the study, why is it, how you gonna get an outside person to study something that you don't even want to study?
We, we put that in the language of that letter and sent it back, that these are the changes we made. That's my motion.
Have a proper motion on the table.
Can you repeat that, Larry?
I'm sorry?
Repeat your motion, please.
Yes, my motion is that we amend this letter that's presented before us to have Lake Akawaha Rodman Reservoir not part of the mitigation for the port dredging of Jacksonville, Jack's Port, and also that we support an independent outside study to be done.
I could support that, second.
Proper motion and a second. Please help me understand. In the intent or the spirit of, of the motion is there. What paragraph would that fit in? And what would you take out of this for us to send back there, because we can't put that on the attorney's back? And, uh, because I'm not sure he or the administrator is clear on, let's, let's, uh, the first paragraph, as a region, we have been working on ways to balance economic and environmental concerns for all of northeast Florida. That's what the stakeholders have been doing. Okay, as funding approach, we have an opportunity to address some of the complexities. I think that statement is fine. I think when you get to the next paragraph, which is where the grief is, they're saying, to the extent that the Jack's Port channel deepening has been linked. We didn't link it, they did. So, it's, it's, it's an accurate statement to possibly revisiting the status of the Rodman Reservoir. So, that, again, I think that statement is accurate, but then in order to move forward in a, in a manner that protect the health of the St. John's River, its tributaries, uh, to capitalize and things of that nature, we want the study so that they are not just steamrolling us, uh, to examine the economic impact of the dam and potentially breaching the dam. And I think, again, I agree with us wholeheartedly that we want the right people studying the Rodman. But if you saying it's off the table, we don't have the authority to take it off the table. We didn't put it on the table. We wouldn't want it on the table, uh, uh, in any, at any point in time. But it's already on the table.
I, I think a little bit to what Mr. Harvey might be saying is that by getting them to, let them know that we're not for putting Rodman Dam up on the table, but basically, in my, in layman's terms, get the independent study and let the facts be rubbed in your face.
That's what this letter does, sir.
It doesn't say anything about an independent study.
I know. All right, so-
Are there any minutes to that meeting, that town hall meeting? Can we get a copy of that?
Sure we can.
I don't know what went on there, and I don't trust.
I, I wanna, I wanna, I don't know if I've-
No, you talking about the meeting that beach?
Our meeting?
No, the, the Chairman of Commerce in Orange Harbor, Florida.
You talking about the one before?
This.
Oh, not the town hall meeting. Yeah, we've had, we've made it in town hall.
Town hall meeting, yes.
Just to-
Stakeholders meeting.
Mr.?
I've got some language here.
Just a moment. Mr. Leary.
The, uh, the economic piece of, of the study that both Mr. Pickens and, uh, Mr. Smith were wanting to see done as part of the study was to measure the economic impact of Rodman to Putnam County.
Gotcha.
And that, that, that's what, that's certainly missing for us. I think everybody will agree to that, and that's what was hoped to be achieved in terms of one thing to come out of an updated study. A more reliable figure of the economic impact of, of Rodman to the county.
When we made our trip to Tallahassee, um, was it in March? I, I can't remember when we went up there. Us, us five went up there that morning. Uh, one of the state representatives came up to me and, uh, uh, told me that, uh, us all five being there made a very strong statement to them before we stood on the issue, but he said there was even a bigger problem there. He said to breach, uh, Rodman Dam, they guesstimated at forty million dollars, and forty million dollars they did not have. So, that's where I feel pretty comfortable that nothing's gonna happen quickly on this. And I don't know if, if y'all were approached with that same information or not, but one particular state rep did come up to me and tell me that.
And what was, how many million dollars is the deepening?
Oh, God.
Three hundred and eighty-five.
Eight hundred million is what I heard.
Three hundred and eighty-five.
Grand total, yeah.
It's a big number.
There's a lot of numbers out there, and so, again, whatever the pleasure of the commission is, I'm apparently reading differently, uh, and I apologize.
Let me read this, this paragraph.
Read it.
Before us. As funding approaches, uh, as funding approaches are being considered for the Jack's Port Channel Deepening Project, we have an opportunity to address some of the complexities of various proposals that could provide economic and environmental benefits to the region. Economics to the Jack's Port, environmental means breaching the dam. That's a strong paragraph right there. I don't know why you can't read that or understand what it's saying, but this thing already tilts to breaching the dam, this letter. I don't like the language in it. Read it for yourself.
The study does not breach the dam. The study, to me, gives us current science for us to, uh, at least have our strategy, and if, again, if we have that independent, impartial, uh, contractor that does the study, then to me, that strengthens the position of Putnam County. But if we are fighting the study, what is it we fighting?
I've got a motion and a second on the floor. We're not fighting the study.
I'll tell you what. This has been a hard day. We've been here a long time. It's not a good time to reach a decision on something. We really need more input. It'd be good to sit down, let Joe Pickens talk to us, and Kelly Smith, and us just talk about what we're facing, and look at the whole thing, and I suggest we just do it on another day, or not put it on top of a day that's been difficult, and while we have fresh minds. So, some morning soon, I, I think we should have a, some kind of a workshop to talk about this.
Mr. Leary, can you contact Mr. Pickens and Mr. Smith? When would you like me to invite them to meet with you?
I think we need a time certain, um.
Could we workshop this, uh, on our next Tuesday? If that's, I, I'm gonna rescind that. I was working that way. I'll rescind that second. Um, and if we can get it into a workshop and get, you know, Mr. Pickens has been on that level, Mr. Smith, I think any input they have would be very helpful.
Tony, for the record, how many times did I strike out just now?
Uh, we have a rescinding of the second, so the motion is standing out there by itself. You wanna withdraw it, or you want it to die?
No, I wanna gavel it out again.
Third time, you strike three.
I think it's fourth and fifth.
I'll see if they're available.
They'll hear us for a little while.
Later part of next Tuesday afternoon.
Are we on a timeframe here that we need to do it quicker than that? Next, what did you say, Tuesday?
When are they going back in the special session for the-
June one is what I thought. So-
Dictate your time.
So, do we have time to do it?
What, what is our current schedule for next Tuesday? I know we've got, uh, we got a lot of technological, and this is a technological situation here, too. What, what time we come on duty next Tuesday?
Two.
Two o'clock, um-
So, we could do it earlier?
You wanna do eleven? About a check.
There's no need to come in early if they're not available, and, right?
Yeah. Well, let's either, let's give you the discretion. I'm thinking if, you know, if we can spend an hour with them, or but I, you know, telling what time we gonna get out of the afternoon, I'd hate to have them here after that meeting, because we've got some experts coming to, to speak.
Do it before, then.
That's what I said, before.
Okay, I missed that.
You wanna do it at one, well, is one o'clock an option? It's kinda tough, one o'clock. Um, that's, I was thinking if we do eleven o'clock, if that's possible, I mean, and then we got a lunch break, like today we got it three o'clock or whatever time it was, and then we come back in for the other. But again, it's gonna be based on the availabilities. Why don't you email us and tell us when they're available? Mr. Pickens might be in Tallahassee doing something else.
You know, I say, what if it's only one of them? Is it one, or none, or both?
Do we need both, or, or will we settle for one?
One's fine.
Two would be better, but-
One'll be fine, I guess.
Okay.
Let's invite both.
And why don't we say, anytime in the morning before the two o'clock meeting would be. And can we set another day, in case that doesn't work?
Mr. Leary, you're gonna invite both, though, correct?
Of course, yeah.
Thank you.
So, how about Wednesday, if Tuesday doesn't work?
Uh, let's let him send us an email, and he can negotiate if Tuesday doesn't work for them, and then see what works for them. Uh, prefer both of them. That way we can, they can jam off of each other, and we'll go from there. Thank you, Mr. Leary. What else do you have?
Uh, I don't have anything unless you have some appointments that you'd like to make, sir.
I'd like to recommend Beverly Carter be reappointed to the District Three Fair Authority. Any other appointments?
I do, sir. I have Danny Tilton for the Green Belt Advisory Board.
Danny Tilton?
Yes, sir.
I have one myself.
Okay.
Uh, Jay Beckenbok has, uh, termed out on District Five Library Board, and I want to appoint, reappoint from previous years, Kathy Warren.
C R K.
Uh, K.
Any other appointments?
One and two got off the hook for appointments.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve those appointments.
We have proper motion for Carter, Tilton, and Warren to be appointed as presented. Second has been made. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like, sign? None? Motion carries. Anything else, Mr. Leary?
No, sir.
County attorney.
Too tired to say anything.
All right, from the clerk's office, do you have anything, sir? District one, any final? Anything else?
No.
District two?
No. I'm gonna talk about that.
Trying to think. Blueberry Festival, Boston. Get there early if you want pancakes. This Saturday. This, uh, festival has really grown despite the growing pains, the new fire department there. We, um, we've relocated the festival right out front on the street with a lot of shade, so even if it's a, a hot day, it'll be cool. It's actually a nice, I like it, under the trees out there, and I think it'll be a very nice festival.
Thank you so much, District two. District four, anything else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as some of y'all might know, uh, after the Blueberry Festival, the town of Interlaken, the Historic Society, uh, has acquired the old black school that was behind the Sid Martin Building. There was a white school out there, and then the black school was behind that, and they're gonna have their dedication this coming Saturday. They purchased that at ten o'clock in the morning.
Ten o'clock. District five.
No, sir. I think that covers me.
Uh, let's go back to District one. I think she has some bragging rights from last night.
Oh, the top eighth grade honors. My grandson was one of them.
Patrick G. Harris, and all of us are proud.
Patrick and Sirius Junior. Thank you. It was a nice evening. I thought it was especially nice, that it was nice for everybody.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and the top fifty seniors are gonna be Thursday night.
That's correct.
Yeah, same place that, or is it Ravine Gardens?
Same, same, I knew it's at the same place. PHS Commons.
Six fifteen.
Yes.
It's good to go to those. It's nice to see proud parents and their kids.
Social hours is six fifteen.
Right. And I'll be a proud parent Thursday night.
Very good.
And this, Candace Flag is in the top fifty, so.
All right.
We're grateful for that. Commissioners, let me commend you for such a day. Um, it has certainly been, uh, a workout. Feel like I've been in the gym. And, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Oh, oh.
Since we're talking all this education, I need to congratulate my son publicly for graduating the St. John's River Community College.
State college.
State college with an AA degree and heading the UF.
All right, all right. Ms. Candace is heading the UF as well. Summer B, already accepted, so, uh, enough to keep them all straight. Thank you so much. Anything else? Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
God bless us all.